Regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:02 PM. I'm going to ask, let's see who we could ask, Councilmember Angie Reyes English to do the invocation, and I'll ask Mayor Bill Brand to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Mayor, I'm gonna be brief. But let me just, real quickly, just say, God is love. Thank you for your continued blessings and keeping us in good light, and may you watch over all of us and continue to help us where we fall in short. Say this in your name, amen.
Amen. Oh, Mayor, Mayor Bill Brand, can you lead us?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's all rise and salute the flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may have Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Pro, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Thank you very much. I remember your presence.
Your presentation, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. So we have a presentation by, uh, Matt Bill Brand, the mayor of Redondo Beach. Uh, Mayor Brand will discuss his proposed constitutional amendment, which will invalidate Senate Bills Nine and Ten, and ensure that in general, a county or city general plan, specific plan, ordinance, or regulation that regulates the zoning, development, or use of land within the boundaries of the county or city shall prevail over conflicting general laws. Welcome, Mayor Brand.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Valentine, and thank you, Mayor Vargas and entire council for having me. And I really appreciate this opportunity. Um, let me go ahead and try to share my screen here. I got a short presentation, and then I'm happy to, uh, take questions. You see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let me, uh, put in presentation mode. So, yeah, I'm Bill Brand, Mayor of Redondo Beach. Was a council member for eight years, and then I got elected mayor. We have an elected mayor in Redondo Beach, served for four years. Got elected first in 2017 as mayor, and then I got reelected recently for another four years. Um, what I'm talking about tonight, it gets complicated, uh, but it doesn't on one level, and that is a basic question of who is better suited to set zoning and other land uses in your town. Is it the legislature from Sacramento taking these broad brushes, as we've all seen, or your local cities and counties who are represented by people who live where you live and understand all the various impacts to the town? First, I admit to apologize, you guys, I'm in a very informal wear. I'm on vacation, so, uh, that's the reason I didn't bother to bring my collared shirt. I meant to, apologies, and, and, uh, yeah. And by the way, thanks for the helicopter support. It comes in handy, uh, often. Unfortunately, it's been, been fairly often recently, but, uh, thank you for that. Anyway, as many of you know, um, Sacramento has been, been really scapegoating cities. We heard this from Assemblymember Kylie in the committee meeting, um, that, yeah, we're basically scapegoating cities on the housing shortage and the affordability crisis, blaming it on local communities. And as a result, they've been stripping, uh, our control of zoning, particularly of residential development, which also affects, uh, commercial development. So, housing shortage is basically caused by local regulations. And that's a theme you're hearing nationally as well as internationally. And so you're seeing big moves to try to strip local control. And it's based on the supply and demand. Um, that, you know, if we just build more, uh, then the prices will come down, demand will meet supply. You know, the, the, the basic econ 101. I'm here to tell you, it's not a natural law. It usually works, but it's not like water boils at 212 degrees Fahrenheit. It breaks down often in big cities, often like ours, where they're desirable to live for a variety of reasons. If density were the answer to affordable housing, then, you know, Sacramento, I'm sorry, San Francisco being the most densely populated city in the state would also be the cheapest. But as we know, it's one of the most expensive. So, supply and demand doesn't always, always work. Uh, many of you know, for the last four years, there's been several housing bills coming down from Sacramento. Actually, it's been about over 60. But the big, big ones that we, many of us remember, uh, and this has been a, a long game for them. Four years ago, it was SB 827, which forced unlimited density, uh, near bus stops on cities. Without a say, that failed, but the next year they brought it back was SB 827. Virtually the same thing, and, uh, that failed. And then last year, it was SB 1120, which required ministerial lot splits of, uh, single-family residents. It was truly an end to single-family zoning. It failed last year, more than a technicality than anything. They ran out of time for the hearing. But this year, as, as probably all of you know, SB Nine passed and has been signed into law. And that requires ministerial lot splits of single-family, uh, zoning. So if someone, uh, has a, a single-family zoning lot and they want to, uh, split it, they can just go into the, you know, city and ask for it, and it has to be approved ministerially. And each lot, according to SB Nine, now each new lot can now have two units. So you're going from one single-family residence to as many as four, and they limit the setback to four feet. So ultimately, when your neighbor's house goes up for sale, you're not likely to get a new neighbor. They're gonna get outbid by likely an LLC or some other investment vehicle, uh, that will, you know, obviously value it in a much different way, and they'll build it out. They'll build the four units. They'll have a four-foot setback. You're not getting a new neighbor, you're gonna get a box. And that's already been happening in other parts, uh, where this has happened. So, uh, unfortunately, they'll be commoditizing residential, and they'll be, they'll most likely be rentals. That's kind of the new cash flow model that, that Wall Street's using on all these upzones. Um, so what do you do? SB Nine passed, what now? And again, it's not just about SB Nine. Been looking at this for a long time, as you saw over the last five years, really, before I saw 827. But SB Nine is a big lightning rod, and everybody's talking about it up and down the state. So, um, I theorized about a constitutional amendment to make local zoning and land use, uh, community, making zoning and land use a community affair over state interest. Because if you read all these bills, every single one of them says, "This is of state interest and supersays, supersedes local, local laws." So I, were they getting that? Get it from the Constitution? And I thought, well, I don't think this is right. I think the majority of Californians want their own towns to be deciding their zoning and development. So I, uh, wrote it, wrote an amendment to the Constitution to make zoning and land use community affairs. And I had to help with Legislative Council in Sacramento. So, uh, Almer Succi, our Assemblymember, liked it so much, he floated it as a bill last March. And it was called ACA Seven. He got Senator Glaser up in the Bay Area to co-author it, and that was ultimately the initiative that amended the state constitution to make zoning and land use, uh, community affairs. Now, of course, it went nowhere, and, and Assemblymember Succi knew it wasn't. In fact, I said, "Well, it's not gonna go anywhere." He goes, "I know, but you'll be able to use it as a way to build awareness, and it'll be out there, and it may even get to the point where they analyze it," which they did. So anyway, uh, and he said, "It will eventually be a citizen-led initiative if you guys get traction." And I said, "Yes." So, that's exactly what happened. ACA Seven has now become a citizen-led initiative to amend the constitution. Legislature wouldn't hear it, and it's called the Brand Wong Mendoza Land Use Initiative. It amends Article 11 of the Constitution, transfers power for zoning and land use from Sacramento back to local agencies. It's a transfer of power. Uh, there's exceptions for the Coastal Act and large infrastructure projects for, you know, water, power, communication, things like that. Does not affect fair housing laws or secret requirements, and it supersedes any previously enacted state bills like SB Nine and SB Ten. So even all these other bills that have passed over the years really force us to upzone areas, as I'm, see you guys are going through as well as we have in Redondo Beach for a housing element, uh, update. You guys are getting 1,700, we're getting 2,400, I believe. But, uh, regardless, the initiative would, uh, undo the state's ability to force us to zone certain areas. So, um, it'll let the Californians, in, in essence, it let the voters decide on the ballot whether the state legislature will determine local zoning from Sacramento or their local city councils and counties. And we're just very confident, uh, that the voters will agree with us if we can get it on the ballot. Title and summary is due this Monday. Filed officially August 25th. Title and summary coming November 1st. It's gonna require well over a million signatures to get it on the ballot in November 2022, so about a year from now. And it's gonna be very expensive. Uh, here are the proponents. John Heath, he's president of the United Homeowners Association in Los Angeles. Jovita Hernandez, she's a council member up in the city of Brentwood. Dennis Richards is a former planning commissioner, city and county of San Francisco. Peggy Wong, mayor of Yorba Linda, and myself, mayor of the city of Redondo Beach. And, uh, we're calling this the tripartisan. This is a, very much cuts across party lines, cuts across, uh, a, a lot of different demographics. There's been a lot of statewide groups that have formed over this takeaway of local control at the state level. Uh, the one there, CCLC, was formed in Torrance by Councilmember Mike Griffiths, and they've been, uh, advocating for, we've really been trying to advocate uh, for, uh, not this takeaway, but to collaborate with the state on affordable housing. So anyway, how can Hawthorne help if you support us? Uh, pass a resolution of support. We now, uh, have templates of resolutions that, uh, cities are starting to pass very quickly. Hopefully, you guys will take it up. And visit the website, stopsacramento.org, and that has, uh, much more information for everybody. So, hopefully, I didn't take too long. Happy to, uh, take questions, and, yeah, let me know what you think.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to ask for any questions?
Yes, um, are there questions for, uh, Mayor Brand, from any of the council members? Or from anyone?
Okay, uh, I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I just have a comment. So, uh, Mayor Brand, thank you very much. This is Councilman Montero. So, um, I did sign that letter that you sent to the LA Times. So, uh, thank you for spearheading this project. Yeah, definitely, we need to take control of our zoning. Uh, we cannot allow Sacramento to dictate, you know, which, you know, where and when they can, uh, just decide to, to break the laws and make people more living in these, like you say, boxes, right? Instead of a single-family home. So now they might end up to have two or three units in a, in a parcel. So, thank you very much for your, for, for your, uh, leadership, and we look forward to working with you on this one. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, uh, council member. Uh, that was Councilmember Burbach that, that helped author that letter to the LA Times. And I will say, what really is big going on behind the scenes is the commodit, commodit, commoditization of residential real estate, um, all over California now because of this, uh, huge upzoning. So you're gonna see a lot more institutional ownership of residential development as we've seen in other parts of the world. So, um, yeah, it's unfortunate, but that's what we're trying to turn the clock back on. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Uh, Mayor Brand, I just have a comment, um, I, or a question, uh, and a comment. What are you seeing from, um, residents as you, as you travel through the areas to try and build up support? What are you seeing? What kind of reaction are you getting?
Well, I think most, most residents don't, don't really understand yet what, what's going on. Um, but when, once you explain it to them, they absolutely do not want legislators in Sacramento determining, uh, the zoning in their town. When you explain to them the simple example I gave, or that it's really squeezing out affordable housing, really about getting more affordable housing. And there's no, and I'm sorry I didn't mention that, there is no affordable housing requirements in any of this, which is really what's so frustrating. I wouldn't be so against it if there were some affordable housing requirements as part of this huge upzoning. The state of California is just giving away this huge upzoning when we really could be using it to leverage more affordable housing. So unfortunately, uh, that's the backstory, and you'll see many, many, uh, large institutional investors getting involved in this now, and we're already, already seeing in other parts of the world.
Thank you, Mayor Brand, for that, um, very enlightening discussion. And, um, if there are no other questions, I'm going to, um, say thank you for your time and effort, and we will be following up with this. And, uh, I will let you know where it goes, because I will be taking it up with the, uh, city council in the next few weeks.
Yeah, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We don't talk enough all our neighboring cities, so it's good to see.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for stepping up, 'cause it takes a lot of work, okay? And we're signing on board. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communications, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
How many, uh, speakers do you have today?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we received no emails regarding public comment for tonight's agenda. However, we do have two speakers tonight for oral communications. And please, um, and just, uh, be advised that we need to wait 30 seconds prior to closing D-2 Act time between Zoom and real time. We do have our first speaker, which is Ms. uh, Netezia Castillo. She is ready to go.
Thank you.
Ms. Castillo, you have three minutes. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Netezia. I am a resident of 120th Street, right across the Hawthorne Airport. And it has been about a year and a half now that I have continuously have to send emails, photography. Um, I, I ask for city council to help and support in regards to the safety of 120th Street. There's constant accidents, just one happening not too long ago, maybe two weeks ago. There is constant safety issues, especially with the airport. I have also contacted the airport myself and spoke to Guido in regards to the safety issues that have happened. There were accidents, where cars are hitting some of the, uh, cars that are inside the airport. And it's a safety concern, because if it hits one of those airplanes that fares, then it could be, uh, an explosion, it could be a fire. And what we're asking is for 120th to look just like the side of Dale Air after La Cienega, because it's the same street where it's actually divided, because every single weekend, and even during the week, there's always fast speeding going on on both sides, because there's four lanes. They stop on the street, and then they keep going for about two miles, because there is no other light. They put a little, uh, after they did this study that was never published, was never even given a copy after I requested for it, had to be done twice, and I asked for it to be done a third time, because the second time it was only done for one day, for like five, six hours. And the first time it was done when there was construction going on and police officers. I, I would like some answers. It's been a year and a half, I still don't get answers. If we put up a, a sign that tells you to slow down to 35, no one follows that, and it's still an issue here. It's a safety matter, it's a concern. And I am, I, I want to know, what are the next steps? Do I need to make a petition? What else do I need to then go to the state? What is the process? Who's in charge of the city? I mean, I, I vote for you guys, so you guys can still be here and represent us, but I'm not seeing the same support. And I've had Donnie from Public Works, I've talked to the city attorney, and it's always, "Well, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this," and nothing gets done. And I really want answers. I'm grateful that they finally fixed the, the, the alley, but we really need to focus on 120th Street. It's not safe. And I welcome each and every single one of the council members to come to my house, sit in front of my house for a weekend, and, and, and pull your chair and, and your umbrellas, because you will see a speed drag ratio every single weekend here, all day. Especially on Sundays, because everybody goes to the Starbucks that's on the corner of Cranston Boulevard and 120th. So I'm asking for support here, and I'm, I'm seeking for answers at this point. It's been a year and a half, and I still don't have answers. I would like to know, what is the next step? So we can get our street to look just like the streets right on Dale Air, past La Cienega and 120th. That's all I have for now. Thank you for your time, and I want to see some results or some feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo, for your comment to me. Okay, next, uh, we do have one more speaker, and I'm going to transfer it over to Ms. Diana.
Um, Mr. Fan, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Hugh Fan, I live in 13300 Cordery Avenue. Avenue House on here. We have a petition sent to the public work, uh, for request, uh, speed bump on October, on August 2nd. And now I get a letter, yeah. Yeah.
Uh, what happened?
Mr. Fan, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Are you done?
So I, 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 um, start now, okay? Uh, I just say that I, uh, we, on behalf of the people living from 132nd Street to 134th Street, we request, uh, a speed bump on this section, because so many accidents happen. Yeah. Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and you're, you're done speaking?
Yeah, I'm speaking now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I, on the behalf of the people living in 132nd to 134th Street on Cordery Avenue, we request to install the speed bump in this section, because in the past few years, so many accidents happen in here. And besides, a lot of traffic, um, drive through here, and some reckless drivers. So, uh, I just get a denial letter from the, uh, Public Works Director, Mr. Alan Lu. He said that we didn't meet the requirement for the speed bump, because, uh, they, he say that the traffic, uh, volume is not enough, but like, they just been told the meter to measure the traffic on Thursday. And you know, like, Monday, Tuesday, during the week, a lot of traffic go through. And, but, only one study about the, the traffic flow is not enough. So we want to see the council look at it and review the, the, the petition we sent to the public, what the outcome is. And because of the accident, because of the children laying around here, and they may get, it's not very unsafe for the people here. That's all I request.
Okay, well, thank you for your call.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
We have nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate that. So that's, uh, so I'm going to declare oral communications closed, ordered.
Uh, we need to wait 30 seconds, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, oral communication is closed, ordered. Madam Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communication? Well, we just did that. All right.
Thank you. At this time, we have the city's consent calendar. Can we proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, there are no bits. Uh, we do, however, have six items on consent. We have Items 6, 7, 10, 11, 12, and 13 for your consideration and approval. I'll start off with Item Number 6, which is Approval and Waiver for Readings and Resolutions and Ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 7 is City Treasurers Request Approval of the Warrants. Item 10 in Resolutions is Resolution Number 8309, which reads as follows, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California Establishing a Four-Way Stop at the Intersections of 141st Street and Washington Avenue." Item 11 is Resolution 8312, "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne Approving the Use of the City Seal by Telehealth Van LLC For Their Work with the City to Provide Mobile Virtual Telehealth Resources to Low-Income Residents and for the City's Misdemeanor Diversion Program." Item 12 is a Resolution 8313, "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California Approving, Authorizing, and Directing Execution of a Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement Related to the CSCDA Community Improvement Authority and the Form of a Public Benefit Agreement, and Also Approving the Issuance of Revenue Bonds by the Authority for the Purpose of Financing the Acquisition, Construction, or Improvement of Projects." Item 13 is Resolution Number 8314, "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California For Came in the Month of October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Hawthorne." Um, and that is all for adoption, Mr. Mayor. That concludes all of the Clerk's Consent Calendar items. If I can have a motion to approve Items 6, 7, 10, 11, 12, and 13, please.
I'll move to approve.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask to pull, uh, Resolution Number, this Item Number 12, Resolution Number 8313. I need to make some record onto, on that item before there's a vote.
You need to make a record in terms of, like, an amendment to it, or what?
There is a certain things that are gonna come that's related to this item at the next council meeting. Um, that's by the community partners that I need to read into the record before vote is taken. And also, there will be a one added item on the Public Benefits Agreement that I wanna put on the record as well.
Okay. So can, uh, can we restate the motion, uh?
Sure, so the items will be Items 6, 7, 10, 11, and 13. Item 12 was gonna be pulled for separate discussion.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, we'll give it to Councilmember Patterson. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine.
Yes.
And, uh, Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. That reflects all council members voting yes.
Okay.
Item Number 12.
Discussion, or go ahead, uh, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, there's, there are a couple of things that I wanna put into the record here before a vote is taken. First of all, on the Public Benefits Agreement that's attached to the resolution, uh, there is a one added subsection to the end of the agreement, which, which will state that the, uh, the, the partnership with the joint, with the JPA will also pay for the city's consultant cost. Uh, so far, it's just the use of, uh, Richard Wasson Gershon, who is also on standby on this meeting as well. Um, that's gonna be added to subsection M of, of paragraph 14. Um, that's gonna be added to subsection M of, of such paragraph fourteen of the public benefits agreement. And I will make those amendments, um, and, and have it filed with the city clerk's office. In addition to that, um, I wanna read into record, on November ninth, there's gonna be an agreement with the, uh, community partners. Also, uh, they're a, uh, they're called Standard Fairing Company. And we have reached an agreement in which, um, Standard Fairing Company as a community partner. Um, will pay hundred fifty thousand dollars to the city for either selected nonprofits or other entities or agencies. That are committed to the improvement of Hawthorne and quality of life for its residents. And as identified by the city and that payment will be provided before November thirtieth. Second, Standard Fairing has also agreed that an additional pledge to provide analysis and assistance to the city. Addressing the challenges of operating certain city-owned properties as identified by city staff. And, and mainly that's on the six city-owned low-income properties. Our team of ex- their team of experts will work closely with, with city staff to identify options to best rehabilitate those properties. And or make them more efficient and less of a drain on the city's general fund while preserving the levels of affordability. Of affordability, affordability currently in place. And that will include a possible rehabilitation and improvement of the properties. Um, finally, uh, there's a commitment by Standard Fairing as a community partner to, uh, commit to use of all available. Available resources to identify the proper operator or operators for the restaurant space at the Millennium. And most importantly, build out the space or spaces appropriately to be key, ready to welcome premier tenants. As a project that the city deserved. And that's what I wanted to read into the records. And we do have, um, Mr. Darren Embry from Standard Fairing. Uh, he has provided the wording for what I have just read into record. And that will come to City Council for vote as a resolution on November ninth meeting.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. Okay, we'll give it to Councilmember Montero. Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we're going to go to, uh, well, there's no public hearings today, so that's, uh, done. Uh, ordinances, we have one item, item sixteen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item number sixteen. I do apologize. Is ordinance number twenty-two twenty-six. It is a first reading. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending chapter eight point one six, eight point one seven A, eight point one seven B, eight point one seven C. Eight point one one eight, fifteen point four zero, and various sections of chapter seventeen point eighty-nine, adding chapters fifteen point eight zero, fifteen point eight five. To the City of Hawthorne Municipal Code Regarding Solid Waste and Making a Determination of Exemption Under CEQA. Uh, this is for introduction, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, I move to introduce. So I'll now take twen- item twenty-seven out of order. Felice Lopez, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, uh, Mayor Protem and Council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present this item. We have, uh, Mister, um, Doug Pryor here. From, who's our consultant and will be giving a presentation on, um, item twenty-seven. Go ahead, Doug, please.
Good evening. Uh, um, let me go ahead and screen share a summary of the full report that you have in your packet. Can everyone see the, uh, my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So I thought ra- rather than having an actuary talk to you about a bunch of accounting terms, I'd try to just, uh, summarize. The disclosure report you have in front of you and, in a, in a few slides here. That's what I have, um, in, in front of us, right? That's what we have in front of us here right now. So this is the, uh, information on the June thirty-two thousand and twenty-one Gatsby seventy-five accounting report. I have a few slides in here that are, uh, not in the disclosure report. I thought we had to first frame this with kind of, um, understanding what we're talking about here, which is. Uh, the city providing retiree healthcare benefits to employees that retire directly from the city. So in general, for miscellaneous employees, the city pays the full single medical premium. Um, for police, the city pays the full premium, um, for different coverages, less certain amounts for, uh, uh. Uh, paid by the retirees. So for single coverage for police, city pays full single premium. For two-party, the city pays a full premium, less a small amount paid by the retiree at fourteen dollars and fifteen cents a month. And even family coverage is primarily paid by the city. All of these, again, employees to retire directly from the city. These benefits are payable for an employee's or for a retiree's, um, lifetime. With, uh, surviving spouse coverage continuing depending on the retirees', um, election under the Calpers retirement system. So that's, just wanna kind of frame what benefits we're talking about here when we get to the accounting information. Um, and then a few more background slides. So this is all that we're looking at here is based on a June thirty-two thousand and nineteen actual evaluation. Valuations are required every two years. Each valuation is used really for two years of fiscal year financial reporting information. The report we're looking at, although it's for fiscal year in June thirty-twenty-one, is using what's called a, a measurement date of June thirty in two thousand and twenty. So a lot of the information you're gonna see in this report is really as of June thirty of two thousand and twenty. And when we look at changes, the changes are really for the one year leading up to that measurement date of, um, June thirty-twenty. So it's really kind of a nineteen-twenty, um, fiscal year, uh, changes that we're looking at. Um, the city is not pre-funding these benefits. So Gatsby, uh, seventy-five requires that, uh, municipal bond rates be used to measure the liabilities. Um, and as you probably well aware, there've been, you know, uh, bond rates are at all-time lows. So when we look at changes, this'll, this'll really kind of, um, uh, you know, uh, come in in a big way in a few slides later. Um, beginning the measurement period, there was a three-and-a-half percent municipal bond rate. And the end of the year, it was two, uh, uh, two point two one percent. So a big drop. It's gonna result in quite a big increase in liability. I thought I'd add in a little kind of historical perspective again, because your, uh, city is not pre-funding. You're kind of subject to these fluctuations in the municipal bond rates. And this chart here has, um, historical information, really going back to, um, June thirty of two thousand and thirteen. But just to give you an idea of the volatility of the bond, of the municipal, municipal bond rates. Um, i- i- as you can see, this is, um, uh, you know, the city implemented as required. Gatsby seventy-five back in June thirty of two thousand and eighteen. So kind of starting from this point here, you can see every six months, initially, you used about a three-point-six percent rate. That increased to three-point-nine and then has steadily been dropping as of the current. It's about two-point-two-one percent. So kind of a, a, a ongoing theme here, talking about discount rates, but, um, we'll, uh, we'll get to that. Um, a little bit more in, in a few slides later. Um, in terms of the liability that's used under Gatsby seventy-five, a lot of information kind of flows from this basic reconciliation, which is in the report. Beginning of the period, a hundred and seven million dollar, um, liability. Um, that each year goes up by service costs, it's benefits accruing for active employees. There's an interest charge on that liability, in this case, three-point-eight million dollars. Um, you then have the discount rate change, the drop from three-and-a-half down to two-point-two-one, increased liability, almost twenty-eight million dollars. Um, and then you have in terms of how you get from beginning to end of year, you also have benefits that were paid to retirees, in this case, almost three million dollars. So net changes were increasing the liability of thirty-two million dollars, a little over that to get to the end-of-year liability. Of a hundred and forty million dollars, almost. Um, it, you know, what Gatsby is seventy-five is trying to do is it's targeting to put this liability that you see here. Onto the balance sheet. There's certain amounts that are deferred. Um, and so if you look at this, a hundred and thirty-nine point seven million dollar liability on the following slide. Um, what you see here is there is that total OPEB liability. What's on the balance sheet is actually a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. That difference or the deferred, um, outflow of resources or deferred, um, outflow of, of, um, you know. Future costs that will be reflected in future periods, um, to make up the difference between what the liability is. Um, in the current disclosure and what is on the balance sheet. And if you look at this, we also included the previous year here, June thirty, oops, not doing such a great job of highlighting that, June thirty-two thousand and twenty. What you see is, yeah, the deferred outflow of resources or rather deferred inflow of eleven million. Um, and that turned to a deferred outflow of fifteen to sixteen million. You look at that difference. That's about that, um, twenty, uh, twenty-eight million dollar liability increase due to the discount rate change. Is really what's, what's going on there with the, um, deferred inflow and outflow of, of resources. Um, so, uh, you know, a- as I said, discount rate is a pretty key thing. There are other assumptions that, of course, go into things. One of the, one of the items that Gatsby requires agencies to disclose is, um, on this following slide. Um, you know, what does happen if you change the discount rate? So what you see here is there is the hundred and forty million dollar total OPEB liability. Um, and if, uh, uh, a hundred basis point higher discount rate had been used, the liability would have dropped by almost. Um, you know, twenty, twenty-two million dollars. If it, if it was a hundred basis points lower, it would have ballooned up to a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars. Um, another, you know, we've been kind of hammering on the, the discount rate. Um, the fact of the matter is, is that, um, you know, there's certainly other assumptions and certainly other important assumptions. Um, under Gatsby seventy-five, you know, you're not gonna see drastic changes in other assumptions from valuation to valuation. Like you will see these rather dramatic changes in the discount rate. Um, but the healthcare trend rate, you know, this is how much do we anticipate premiums to go up in the future? Um, this is also required disclosure to say, well, what happens if, you know, the actuary is wrong? Or if the actuary had used a different assumption? So a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty million dollar accrued liability would have increased to a hundred and seventy-three million dollars. If every year premiums increased by one percent more than, than was expected in the valuation by the actuary. And if it was a hundred basis points lower, it would be, um, dropped to a hundred and fourteen million dollars. So that's kind of really the key points, um, you, you know, I wanted to cover from the report. You have the full report in your packet, kind of looking ahead. I just wanted to drop a, a, um, brief comments on the next disclosure. Which would be, of course, for June thirty-two thousand and twenty-two. Um, as I think I said at the beginning, Gatsby requires valuation be prepared every two years. So there'll be, need to be a new valuation prepared as of June thirty of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, that valuation would have a, this is a typo here, this should say, um. No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, this is right. So, uh, we'll use a June thirty-two thousand and twenty-one valuation. The measurement date will be as of the beginning of that year, so it actually fiscal year twenty-two would be June thirty-twenty-one measurement date. We already know what the municipal bond rate is at that point in time. It's two-point-one-six percent. So when you go to look at next year, you're not gonna see, uh, you know, a, a dramatic increase in the liability that you did in this report. Um, you know, there'll be ass- assumption changes of the experience, um, differences that will be measured. Um, but you won't see that dramatic increase for the discount rate change. Um, but that's kind of what's coming down the road. So that was probably a pretty quick synopsis of the report. There, I, I have the full report here. If you want me to pull that down and screen share the report, full report being what's in the, um, in the package. But with that up, I guess I'll pause and see if there's any, any, any questions.
Are there any questions for the gentleman?
Uh, Mayor to the Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, where'd you go, Mr. Pryor? There you are. Um, thank you for the, um, presentation. There's obviously a lot of numbers, a lot of information. Uh, I was trying to follow along, but, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not as savvy, okay? Um, I wanna know from your expertise, um, your knowledge, are we similar? To other, um, city agencies with similar size, employee size retirees? Would you know that?
I- in terms of, I, in terms of the benefits you're providing? Or in terms of kind of the liabilities involved, given the size of the city or both, maybe, I, um.
Right, the liabilities, the size, um, you know, our employees in comparison.
Yeah.
The number, the, the, the size of our workforce, et cetera.
Right, yeah, I mean, your benefits are, um, a little on the higher end compared to most agencies, I would say. Um, right, I mean, essentially for police, it's full coverage. Um, you know, the minor payment from the, from the retiree. And for active employees on the, I'm sorry, for miscellaneous employees, you have the, um, full single premium. So, um, you know, probably, you know, higher than average. Um, and then you kind of have, in terms of the liability, that's kind of compounded by the fact that you're not pre-funding. And so, right, if you were pre-funding, you know, the municipal bond rates that Gatsby is forcing you to use. Would, would change from using that to a long-term return on the trust assets, which might be, you know, six to seven percent ballpark, right? Maybe a little lower, but somewhere around there. So I think the, um, the combination of those two, when you look at the, um, financial impact. Is probably a little higher on the upper end, um, of, of what we see with most, most agencies.
Is there anything that you're suggesting that we should look at or maybe have a better evaluation of? Prior to the next round of, uh, of the valuation that we need to, um.
Right, well, we, we always recommend agencies look at pre-funding. Um, you know, because what you're doing there is you're, uh, you, you're aligning the cost of providing these benefits. With the period over which they're earned, right? Employees are earning these benefits while they're actively employed, but when you're not pre-funding, you're waiting until they leave the city to start paying the benefits, right? So we always recommend, um, agencies look at pre-funding. You know, it aligns the cost more, uh, appropriately with, with employment with the city. As well as, to the extent you can afford it, right? It will lower your long-term cost by the, the additional investment arrangements you would earn the trust. Now, we also recognize, of course, that, you know, we're not, um, we're, we're not, uh, financial advisors. We understand, you know, you, you, many cities out there are not pre-funding. In theory, it's a good thing to do and as I say, we're recommending agencies do that, but we understand you've got, you know, roads to fix and all sorts of other budgetary constraints. That we, we're not making a call on what's more important. We're just encouraging you to look at, at the issue of pre-funding.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anybody else? Uh, ask Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I have my hand up.
Uh, okay, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Patterson and then, uh, Councilmember Montero.
Uh, first things, uh, Councilmember Reyes English for that question brings up, you know, some important topics. I, I really just wanted to ask the city manager if you could look into, uh, would it make sense for us to do, to pre-fund? As well as what changes might be possible so that our liability is more consistent with, uh, other municipalities in the region? And just kind of, you know, provide us a little bit more information as to, um, you know, what those options look like and, and what, uh. You know, what it would mean to our budget if we decided to pre-fund. Is that something we can afford? What kind of effect it'll make, right, on our, on our budget?
Proceed.
Thank you. And, and Councilmember Patterson, just, um, I wanted to make sure that, um, you knew that we are in contact with, uh, a consultant. That will be bringing information probably in January regarding pre-funding, the different options. Um, and their, their suggestions as to how we begin the process.
Anybody else? Okay, Councilmember Montero.
Uh, yeah, a- actually, uh, Felice have, uh, have, uh, basically answered that question. Because I was going to ask, uh, our consulting was about this pre-funding. It was what the subject said there. Uh, this money has to come from the general fund or there is some other ways that we could pre-funding these liabilities? So, and I guess Felice said we're gonna have some more discussion that later on in January, so thank you.
We will, and, and, and it would be a general fund, uh, contribution, so, um, but we definitely will have additional information coming in the next few months.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mayor to the Chair real quickly, Felice. Uh, I, I, real quick, sorry. Um, is there a, is there a, a fund, I mean, not a fund, is there an? Is there a, is there a, a fund, I mean, not a fund, is there an account that we hold at any given time to, to address these types of payouts that we have versus, you know, the other option which was, you know, to wait till they retire and they pay them out? Is there anything that we do currently or can we do to maybe make a special fund?
We, we don't currently have that. We are on a pay-as-you-go, as Doug mentioned. And so we do want to recommend the pre-funding and we will bring all of those options to you along with steps to get to that point. We would actually, the recommendation from Councilmember Patterson at the last meeting where he suggested that we put together a committee that would help with investments. We would need that for this as well. So it will be kind of a, a dual duty for that, that committee once it's put together for the investments for the city and for the investments for the pre-funding.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much.
All right, I think that's it.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was. So that was item number twenty-seven. I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, we have general matter. Madam Clerk, please read, please proceed to read each of these items into the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The city, I'm sorry. The city of Hawthorne has to create a coyote information guide. That staff will distribute to the residents of Hawthorne to educate our community on protocols regarding encounters with coyotes. Staff recommends the city council grant this affirmation to move forward with the coyote information guide and implement an outreach program to educate the public and provide guidance in dealing with coyotes in Hawthorne.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Okay, second. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero.
Mayor, did you know there's coyotes?
Yeah, there's coyotes floating around all over the place. They go down the, the little riverbed.
Okay. I have yet to, I, I was not aware.
I haven't seen, but I've heard.
Learn something new every day.
They travel along those little, you know, water canals.
Dominion channels.
Yeah.
I'll probably think it's dog or something.
My neighbor, my neighbors in Holly Park have seen them quite often as a member.
Okay, okay.
Okay, guys, let's see, so number nineteen.
Item number nineteen is a date on the pallet shelter project to be located at the Hawthorne Lenox Park and Wright Side. Staff recommends the city council receive and file this report.
Move to receive and file, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
What reflects Mayor Councilmember's voting yes, it passes unanimously.
Okay, number twenty, the employment agreement between city manager Von Trey Norris and the city of Hawthorne. I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. And that was Mayor Vargas making a motion with Mayor Proton Valentine second, correct? Thank you. With that, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Norris.
Employment agreement between city attorney Robert Kim and the city of Hawthorne. I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll give it to Councilmember Montero. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero.
Congratulations to both of you.
Yeah.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Just keep moving forward and doing, doing your job.
Absolutely.
So now the city manager's consent counter. Item number twenty-two, which is on the city, city manager's consent counter. Mr. City Manager, the agenda reflects you have items twenty-three to twenty-seven on the consent counter. Please proceed by introducing each item into the record.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have item twenty-three through twenty-seven for your approval. Item twenty-three, appropriation of ten thousand dollars to assist with providing four hundred, approving, excuse me, assist with providing four hundred significant Hawthorne residents with gift cards to purchase food for Thanksgiving. Recommended motion, staff recommends that city council approves the city manager to organize a multi-community event to provide four hundred residents with gift cards to purchase food for Thanksgiving. Funds will be appropriated from coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund made possible by American Rescue Plan Act. Item twenty-four, guidelines to facilitate a planned return to in-person council meetings and commission meeting board meetings. Recommended motion, staff recommends that city council revisit the discussion to have in-person city council meetings on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Item number twenty-five, measure M funny agreement MM four-six zero-two-point-zero-three between the city of Hawthorne and the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to design street improvements for the Monita Gardens mobility improvement project and appropriation of three million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the general fund balance for this project. Recommended motion, staff recommends, excuse me, recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council accepts the agreement, grant and approve, authorize the city manager to execute the fungi agreement and all future amendments and appropriate three million, three thousand twenty from general fund balance to account number two nine one dash five five zero two dash X X X dash four zero zero one for the project to design street improvements for Monita Gardens Mobility Pro- Improvement Projects. Item twenty-six, progress payment number seven, the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-four point five zero to Solistic Contractors Corporation, DBA, Shaughnessy of Downey, California for project number twenty dash one-two, Curry Ave Improvement Project Phase Two. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council approves this progress payment number seven to Solistic Contractors Corporation, DBA, Shaughnessy of Downey, California. Item twenty-seven was pulled. Thank you.
You already did that.
Yes.
I make a motion?
Uh, to the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. First, I want, I want to see about the item twenty-four. The January eleventh, it is possible that maybe the January eleventh meeting, we could discuss the reopen of, of city hall and, and, and council meeting in person via Zoom and then we could resume on January twenty-fifth in person. Because I, I'm waiting to see, because, you know, it's going to be holidays, right? And then January, probably would be some more protocols coming from the state and from the county. I think maybe on the January eleventh meeting, the first meeting of the year, maybe we should still do it on Zoom and then do the second meeting on the twenty-fifth in person. Okay? And then, item twenty-fifth, I would like to see if, Mr. Norris, if you can talk to Alan at Public Works. I don't know if it's possible. Since we're going to do all this street improvement in the area of Monita Gardens, it is possible to look at the streets that needs to be, have speed humps. Because we know that most of the streets, people have been driving fast in all the streets. And we got a lot of residents coming asking for speed, speed humps on, on some of those streets. So I don't know if it's part of the improvement, the Monita Garden Mobile Improvement Project to see if it could be incorporated into that. So then we don't need to be doing more. So if everything is incorporated on that specific plan, to see if it's possible to do speed humps in some of the street. Like the gentleman came for about Cordare, because I already heard about Cordare a long time ago. People driving fast and then all these other streets, because you see most of the Monita Garden Street does not have speed humps compared with the areas west of us, of Hawthorne Boulevard, that a lot of the street has speed humps. Okay? That's, that's my recommendation. And I will, I will second your motion, Mr.
Mr. Montero, could you repeat what you said for item twenty-four?
Item twenty-four, because when I read the, the staff report, it, it, it's recommended for us to return in person on January eleventh. I, I'm proposed was to return in person on January twenty-fifth. Well, because we're only going to have, let's say, one meeting in November, one meeting in December. And then we know that is talking out there, the CDC and then talking about the virus still after holidays, they have to evaluate to see where we at, right? Because, because a lot of families are going to get together, a lot of traveling and they still don't know what's going to happen after the holidays. So I'm thinking that the first week in January will have a better idea of how we're going to come back in person and reopen city hall, let's say, January twenty-fifth or February first.
Now, I agree with you a hundred percent. Looking at the staff report, it, the, the wording is contradictory. At one point, it says that we will discuss it on the eleventh. Another part, it says we will begin in-person meetings on eleventh. So I appreciate your clarification on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
I have motion.
There's still discussion.
Well, go ahead, Ms.
Uh, Councilmember Valentine, she's first.
Oh, you're muted, Councilmember. Mayor Proton, you're muted.
Okay, so I wanted to talk about the, I actually wanted to talk about the, the assistance of the, of the ten thousand dollars to assist the residents with gift card. So, are, are, are we going to resolve this first and then discuss each one? How, how are we doing this? Are we discussing each one of them? Because right now, I think the discussion on the floor was Councilmember Montero's item. He, he had a discussion on twenty-four. I wanted to talk about twenty-three. Okay, so my, my question was, how is this going to be decided? When you, when you make the discuss, you're, you're talking about four hundred residents. Where, how are you going to make the decision about who these residents are going to be? And basically, that's it. What, 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 how is the decision going to be made to, to organize this event? To, to provide for them? Who are, who are the people you're providing for?
Can I go ahead and answer that? Good evening, Councilmember Valentine. What we would like to do, what we did prior to, well, during COVID, the, the first wave of COVID, we advertised this item through our social media sites, our large marquee and through social media. We had a checklist that individuals had to live in Hawthorne and they had to meet certain qualifications as receiving any type of public assistance in need, letter stating they're in need of this item. And we vetted each application and then after vetting, we would call that resident to inform them if they qualified for the program.
And that you're, you're saying you're going to do it the same way for this, for this program as well?
Absolutely. We, we feel as the city and staff members, the, the past way we conducted these distributions was very successful, very fair and very equitable.
Yeah, it sounds like a really good idea because you're actually creating a lot of goodwill too and it's around the holiday season. So I think, I, I, I think it's a really good idea and I, 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 I do approve it.
Thank you for those sentiments. Thank you.
And just to piggyback is just to make sure, Von knows this, is we're going to advertise for families in need, okay? For the low-income families in Hawthorne. So it's not just abroad for everybody. Thank you.
Right. Roll call vote. Do we have, do we have a motion or we still have discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion on item twenty-four specifically with Councilmember Montero making a motion and seconded by Councilmember Patterson to amend the recommendation from January eleventh to January twenty-fifth for in-person city council meetings.
I have a question. I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but I was, I still, I didn't get my question asked. With regards to item number twenty-four, wasn't there a directive at some point to staff to see what other cities are doing? And I think we were provided a sheet sheet that shows who's still having Zoom meetings and still who's in person. And from what I concluded, from what I saw, it looks like a lot of cities are still doing Zoom. And from what I understood, it didn't seem as if there were as many cities that are returned or are planning on returning to in-live council meetings. So I think we still have some, we need some clarification there too. Because it's, I, I know there's, the two members here said January, but the, the reason we made an assessment of other cities was to kind of give us an idea whether or not we're going down the right path.
I, I figure on the eleventh, we'll discuss it.
Yeah.
Prepare for the twenty-fifth.
That's correct.
And it happened on the twenty-fifth.
Can, can I just make a request to get, bring back to us another sheet sheet showing us at that time who's continuing meetings in Zoom and who's already opened in live? If I could get another revision of those cities and or other cities that we could pose those questions to, okay?
Absolutely. We'll send that information out prior to the January eleventh meeting.
Thank you.
So I think the clarification for item number twenty-four is that we go with the recommended motion is to bring it back for discussion on January eleventh.
And, and we will be meeting on, on Zoom on January eleventh. And then we'll decide if we're going to come back in person on January twenty-fifth or in February or later date. And also will be based what LA County and the state of California, probably they're going to be lifted a lot of these, these restrictions if the virus is going away.
Okay, do we need, we need to roll with the motion?
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Councilmember Montero, seconded by Councilmember Patterson. And I'll go ahead and proceed with roll call if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
And Count Vice Mayor Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Oh, I will do make a motion on twenty-three to move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, the second, was that by you, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to roll call. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Uh, Count Vice, I'm sorry, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, on twenty-fifth, I, I'll make a motion, but, but also with the, the, to ask Mr. Norris to talk to Alan to see if we can incorporate on this, on this plan at the look, some of the street for, before they create any type of improvement or the repavement or anything like that. And, and the handicap is to look into speed humps, okay? That, my motion.
Can I just make a quick note also?
And speed limits too.
For item number twenty-five, Public Works, Alan, if we could please also, in the language of Monita Gardens Mobility Improvement, can we give a, a description of what, what is Monita Gardens as far as the territory? What we're talking about, the area? I think for some folks, they, they, they don't understand, you know, every community is named a certain grid or a certain district. And so Monita Gardens Mobility Improvements, I just want to know from what era to which areas in boundaries. That's all.
I make a motion.
I, I have some more discussion on, on twenty-
Uh, I, I have some more discussion on, on twenty-five, uh, twenty-five.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, so I, I want to make sure that we're, that as we go through these projects, we're, we're taking a look at. The, uh, what we already agreed to do as far as the South Bay Fiber Network. And we are laying wire, we're laying fiber in these areas where we're doing construction so that we can. Um, more easily when, when the time comes. Uh, you know, have these projects that will improve internet, uh, viability throughout the communities. So, can we get some clarification on this? Are we, are we? When we are doing construction, are we also laying fiber in these na, in these areas?
Good point, Ms. Valentine. Thank you.
Alan, would you be able to assist with that question, please?
Uh, yes, um. Do you have a mayor, Mayor Potem and City Council? Um, for this project, uh, we can look into laying the conduit. Uh, for the future fiber, but we will not be installing the fiber itself.
And, and why is that?
Um, because, um, if we just lay the, the fiber, the fiber is, is pretty expensive still, uh, because of the distance. Um, and if we are, if we are not using it, we're not connecting the fiber, um, there is a high chance that. Uh, they may be damaged. Um, so in the future, when we do need to connect them, um, we might run into issues. So it is better to install the fiber, um, at a time where, where, where we'll be actually using and connecting this fiber. At this point, we, we don't have any location to connect to. So we, we do not want to install a fiber just laying inside an empty conduit.
But you're saying you're, you're actually going to lay the conduit?
Yes, we can lay the conduit so that we don't have to open up the street again.
Okay.
The street.
That's fine. And, and are you going to be doing that?
Uh, yes, we can look into that, yes.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, I, 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 you know, it, it seems to me that from now on, or we should have been doing it before, but from now on, we should be. Uh, we should be doing it whenever we're doing construction, you know, make it so that we can facilitate the, um, the, you know, the eventual. Setting up of, of, of the fiber network all over the, uh, all over Hawthorne.
I agree a thousand percent.
Yeah.
To the chair, I'm sorry, Mayor, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, uh, giving direction to the city manager, um, can you please work on? Uh, some things that we discussed with regards to our lighting fixtures, our lighting. Um, where from what I understand, there is, uh, something we could, uh. There were some things that we learned while we'll, uh, we attended some of the conferences. And there was some discussion around how the city could make residual income from, uh, fiber, from the, our, 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 our. Our internet services, our lighting services, and how maybe we could sell that. And so. I think Vaughn knows, uh, exactly what I'm talking about, but let's look into that also just, uh, to see if there's any. Anything that we could work on that ultimately pays us back. And it has to do with, uh, LDL lighting. And, um. I don't have quite the, the language for that, but I'm sure, uh, through our, uh, notes that we have on, we could, we could discuss that more.
All right. Do we have a motion on this?
Yeah.
Yes, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Marcus.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to zero unanimously. Thank you.
All right, so we already have, we already voted on twenty-six, correct?
We haven't voted on twenty-six.
No.
Roll call, uh, motion, please?
Second, motion.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your motion?
I make a motion and it's been seconded by Councilwoman Montero.
Thank you very much with that, with the clarification. Uh, with that, uh, a roll call for Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Count, uh, right, Mayor Proton Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Marcus.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, uh. Item twenty-seven was taken out of order and vote, voted on earlier this evening. Item twenty-eight, there's no items on the city attorney's, uh, ca, consent calendar. Uh, we have the, the city council discussion action items. Uh, we didn't use item thirty, uh, but we do have thirty-one. Councilmember Patterson, uh, you brought up a discussion item. We'll. Uh, we'll take up, uh, deputy city treasurer position first. And upon conclusion of the discussion, we will continue, uh, with request to also discuss the investment oversight committee. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There's two of them in there.
Appreciate it. So, uh, essentially, I really want to just ask the city manager to look into what. Uh, other cities are doing in terms of, uh, how their city treasurer's office is established and how it functions. With the, um, the finance department. Uh, I think at some point we should establish a deputy city treasurer, which would be a, um. Uh, of course, a, a hired employee position, right, part of one of the employee groups. Whose responsibility would be, uh, cash management, uh, and investments. Uh, and whatever the duties that city manager seeks fit. I think that the city, a couple of things are happening. One, the city's losing a lot of potential revenue by there not being a dedicated person. To, uh, help make sure monies are being maximized on a daily basis. Um, I believe that this separation of duties also will benefit the city. Um, obviously, I'm very biased in the subject. I'm the deputy, chief deputy treasurer of the city of Carson. Um, those duties have been separated out from the finance department. Where, uh, my duties over at the city of Carson, I print all the checks for the city. Uh, my department, we take in all the money for the city. And, uh, we handle all the investments for the city and the cash management for the city. And so, uh, something I, it's something, a position I've had since, uh, since when I was the city treasurer. That we separate those duties out of the finance department. And obviously, our treasurer's an elected position, it's a part-time elected position. We can't require that position to. Um, handle all of those things. So that's why I just, there should be a full-time deputy. That works with the, uh, the treasurer and the city manager to handle those duties in addition to. Whatever other duties he might see fit, but being started by looking to seeing how other cities are, are managing. Uh, those duties and separating them out. Um, you know, luckily, when I was treasurer, it's this, I knew some things of, some things about investments. Was able to kind of make some allocations and took our, our revenue from thirty thousand dollars a year to half a million dollars a year. And I think that although interest rates are down, having some, uh, somebody that can really focus on. The cash management and investments can continue to benefit the city, so. Those are my thoughts and, you know, obviously open for discussion, but really I just want to ask the city manager to kind of look into how other cities are managing that.
Any comments? Or are we going to ask the city attorney to look into that or what's your desire?
I'll ask the city manager to look into.
Oh, the city manager, yeah.
Yeah, how other cities are managing that, those responsibilities. Um, those who have a, a city treasurer, you know, do they have a deputy? Um, and just come back with some recommendations based on what other cities are doing and some ideas of, you know, if it does make sense for us to. Uh, to kind of, you know, make that separation and create that position.
Direction received. Thank you.
The investment oversight committee, uh, really is my, and it's up to how the council want to handle it, but it's really my vision of, once there is a. Uh, a chief deputy treasurer, they have the authority, right, to manage the cash. So right now, we're sitting on. Probably close to a hundred million dollars. And most of us earning no money, right? We just have a city in, in a checking account somewhere. We have some money in a sweep account earning, underperforming. And we have just too much money just sitting on the sideline, not doing anything. Uh, and we don't have an expert, a full-time expert that's kind of on top of all that. So, uh, in a perfect world, what I would like to see happen is that that chief deputy treasurer have the authority to manage the cash between. Uh, savings, checking, money market account, life and bonds. Consistent with, uh, council-approved investment policy and consistent with a council-approved cash management strategy. And that department work in conjunction with a investment oversight committee. To hold that the treasurer's office accountable to make sure that they are managing money consistent with those two policies that we have to pass. So we have to pass a cash management policy and an investment po, uh, updated investment policy. Uh, last one we passed, the last one I wrote a long time ago. And, and that, that, um. That committee would be comprised of a, a councilperson, uh, city manager, uh, the treasurer's office. And somebody from the community, right, that kind of, uh, probably meet on a quarterly basis. Reviews the investments and the cash management over the previous quarter before it's presented to the council. Right? And also, uh, discusses what the strategy for the next quarter will be, right? And essentially, hold, help, helps to hold that. That office accountable as they have the discretion to kind of manage the money consistent with those policies.
Okay.
Did you include the, the city treasurer that is, is elected on that committee?
Yeah, so I don't know if it should be the elected treasurer or both the elected treasurer and the deputy, but I did say the treasurer's office. So it would be the, the. A, a, a council member, the city manager, the treasurer's office and a, uh, uh, somebody from the community, maybe even the, the finance director. So let's make it a total of five. So this is a common practice in a lot of cities and municipalities. Uh, I, I attended the, um. California Municipal Treasurers Association annual conference, uh, a couple of months ago. Fortunately, nobody from our, our city was there. I was there on behalf of the city of Carson. And, uh, this is very common practice amongst, uh, many, many municipalities.
And for clarification, this is after, um, city manager looks into a creating a new position of deputy city treasurer?
I, I think, I mean, that would be i- ideal part of making that committee work, but I still want to leave it to. The city manager to put together a game plan. We can, it can be implemented prior to. Um, but the per, that, that, having that committee only makes sense if, um. Well, the, the committee function a lot of ways. So that committee can be established today. And in conjunction with city treasurer, make recommendations to the council. To approve the move forward, but at some time in the future, really the treasurer's office should have discretion. To manage the money consistent with those policies that should be passed. And. That, that committee works with the treasurer, both the treasurer and the treasurer for doing that. So, you, you know, it can be established right away. To function a certain way and then change over time as the treasurer's duties changes.
Okay, anything else? We're good?
I'll say go ahead, you know, with the, with the plan to, to create that committee. Because in police mentioned that you need that for the investment and also for that, uh, liability retirement thing, so.
So, so, so far, I see that there, I heard the directive as. Um, city manager and, and, uh, work with the city manager to, to come back with a report. Of the steps that will be needed because even creating a, a new position of deputy city treasurer that involves. Negotiation with the bargaining units and what kind of position and some more, uh, recommendation that'll be, that'll be needed by staff. So for now, we'll just come back with a.
That, that would be separate than, than, uh, the best oversight committee. That would be two different.
Yes.
Things to the view.
Yes.
Yeah. Valentine, you mute, yeah.
I have, I have a question. I, I think, uh, maybe city treasurer's hand was, uh, was ahead of mine.
Go ahead. He's the one that introduced it, so go ahead.
No, I'm saying Gregory Fallon.
Okay, the city treasurer.
I think his hand was ahead of mine.
Go ahead.
Yeah, am I allowed to talk during these discussions? Well, I don't know.
But we're, we're, we're calling on you for your.
Allow him to talk to me.
Oh, so I can talk. I wasn't sure if it was only council's allowed to talk right now. Um, I just don't understand it at all, because I, I mean, just as far as the amount of money and what needs to be done. Like, I mean, maybe hiring, like, uh, some outside consulting, but an actual employee to do all this stuff. I don't know, maybe I'm just missing it. I just don't see, you know, the complexity in all this and having a committee and this other stuff. Uh, but if that's, you know, what, what is done in other cities, me just, you know, I don't, I don't quite get it. Uh, as far as having, you know, a whole position devoted to it, because I just see the amount of money, the amount the interest rate pays. I'm not saying I'm against it. I think it could make sense in the future when there's a lot more money. That you actually can, you know, use to invest. I just, uh, on the face of it, I don't, I don't quite understand it. And I, you know, it's the first time I've, you know, heard about, uh, this kind of being discussed. So that's just kind of my two cents. Cheers.
Okay. What do we have? What's? What's the desire?
Yes, I'm next. So, so I've got, I, I, I want to approach this from a different angle. Um, there are, there are other priorities, I think, that we are. We are, we need to consider ahead of that position. I mean, that's not something that I think is a. Is, is needed to the extent that other things are needed. I think we are really in need of an assistant to the city manager. Because the city manager's duties are extensive and there are a number of things and a number of projects. That he's not able to accomplish because he just can't do everything. And I think an assistant to the city manager is a much more important position at this time that we need to consider. I think we need an economic development director. I think, um. And perhaps the assistant to the city manager could also serve as the economic development director. But I think these are positions that the city needs. Much more critically than an assistant to the city treasurer. That's my take.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to comment on that. I think that it's possible to, uh, that we had a person over. Uh, what's it, business licensing, right? Our business licensing, is that, that's the department, the cashier's department, the department that everybody comes and spends money at. Um, I think that, that director could also double as the, uh, the deputy treasurer as well and handle those responsibilities. Um, it may not need to be, uh, a complete position by itself, but I think those are duties that might needs to be. Able to focus on growing, right, as part of their, their duties. They're not being done currently. And. I'm of the belief there's nothing more important than our finances, right? We can't really properly account for how our money's being spent right now. We can't properly, uh, manage the money that we currently have. I think that needs to happen before we start really getting engaged spending money on whatever else. But I do agree that, uh, it's a good idea to have a economic development director maybe merged with the. Position of a, a, a assistant city manager. I mean, that's a different subject, but I agree about all those other things that you mentioned. Mayor Proton are of value, but I think there's nothing of more value than making sure our money's handled properly. Um, and I think there's a, there's a solution that can be found. That's why I want the city manager to do some research and make some recommendations.
Through the chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I do agree that because we, 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 we are going to hire somebody on, for the finance. To replace Frank who left. So we should look into, you know, tweak the job description. Just to see if we can find somebody that have that expertise of this deputy city treasurer, right? Uh, so, so can, can do the, the, the job, um, because, because, um, I was going to wait a little bit. When Vaughn comes up with a report about the deputy city treasurer was to say instead of a full-time, we could have got a, a part-time. But I, I agree with the, uh, Mister Patterson to look into tweak the, the position that we're going to hire. Uh, to replace Frank at the, at the finance department. And, and I do agree with Ms. Valentine. Yes, we do need, uh, an assistant city manager. We'd combine with the economic developer because we've been asking for economic developer for a long time, you know, even when Arnie was here. Uh, so, um, we do need to look for those, uh, for those, uh, particular skills. Uh, to someone that could work hand in hand with Vaughn, uh, because, uh, yeah, he has a lot in his plate. And we need to give him some, uh, assistant because we want everybody to be successful. And that is the, the need to make sure that the city is running effectively. Like, finance is very important. Uh, the daily, daily operation is very important. Make sure that the city and our constituent is, uh, is happy what's going on in the city hall. So I do agree with Ms. Valentine. I do agree with, um, Ms. David. Uh, that we need to, we need to figure out how we're going to make all these things work to come to fruition. So, thank you.
Okay. So where are we at?
Oh. But I would say go ahead with that oversight, uh, committee that is needed, okay? So, 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 so since so far we don't have a deputy city treasurer, so we could invite. Uh, the current city treasurer, uh, Mister Fallon, the city manager, the finance director and, and somebody from. and and somebody from the community to be on that oversight committee. Can I have an amen?
I think we've already beat it enough. I think they've given their marching orders and uh I think we're all good.
Are we clear, Mrs. City Attorney?
Absolutely clear.
All right, thank you. Let's move forward.
Now it's you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh okay, so was with Rick, I have item number thirty-two on the agenda. I'm talking about the freeway on and off ramps. Um and I think uh, well, communicating with Caltrans, I know they have an ambassador, but the ambassadors have not been like uh from colloqu- colloquially, I found that they're not a good conduit necessarily for getting things done. So um I wanted to see if uh our staff has any comments on this. Uh Mr. City Manager, I think you might, you guys might have done some live work already, right?
Absolutely, uh we made contact and established to our ambassadors. Uh we've also made uh contact with our liaison for this area, so staff is in communication with those individuals, setting up meetings to uh rectify the situation that you mentioned in our last meeting.
Okay.
So I hope uh during our next meeting in November, that staff can provide an update on changes in those areas.
Okay, sounds good. So let's get an update real soon, okay?
I have a comment on that.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um so um, Mr. City Manager, at some point, um when you you're speaking of the ambassador, is that Mr. Sue for our area? Is that who you were in touch with, Mr. Sue?
Alan, can you confirm the name of the ambassador, please?
Uh yes, um ambassador is Robert So.
Oh, so 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 I guess my 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 comment about him was I was not impressed because he was supposed to have reached out to us months ago when when uh Eric Lee was still city manager. We were talking about Mr. So being the ambassador and that we were going to have meetings, he was going to be contacting us. And that's what we heard from Caltrans. And are you saying now that we haven't nev- never had a meeting with Mr. So? Yeah?
Um we we have several conversations with Mr. So. Um he have make uh reference to a different person for us to contact with. Um so we have been talking to the uh maintenance deputy. Uh we also be talking to the maintenance supervisor uh that is taking care of uh Hawthorne in the South Bay area separately uh to get help. So we.
Do they give us any concrete plans or what are they, what are they saying?
Um they they are working to give us a schedule. Um actually, last week, uh they have cleaned it, the one oh five freeway ramps on Hawthorne Bolowa. Um and they and we also in partnership with them along with CHP and Hawthorne Police Department to do cleanup on the abandonment of Caltrans. So we have been doing that for the last few weeks. And we have he- we have been healing for a different area in the last months uh and clean up a lot of the abandonment.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair before, Alan, don't go away. It is my understanding also that uh when the Caltrans doesn't clean up, uh if we clean up as a seat of Hawthorne Public Works, if they go ahead and clean up the areas, we build them, right?
Uh we don't do that to Caltrans. We only doing that to the Union Pacific Railroad area. We we don't go to the Caltrans property because um they are a little bit different. Um they are higher speed. It's more liability to to our staff and to our contractor. So we've been coordinating any cleanup work with them and we do it together a lot of times.
Okay, yeah, because because the reason I was asking because I know the Pacific Railroad, right, uh because they usually they don't come and clean all the time. Uh because, for example, there is a lot of uh trash, like uh black bags, you know, I don't know. People go ahead and throw them on the on the railroad tracks. Uh even there is some that is between Inglewood and and Hawthorne Boulevard that uh you guys need to look into it because Cal uh because the Pacific Railroad is not doing their jobs. Okay, thank you.
All right, that's it. Thank you. Uh elected officials' reports, recommendations, Mr. City Treasurer?
Everyone, uh good discussion. Uh it was great to hear the the mayor Verdondo uh explaining how we should definitely stand up for the rights of cities to decide their own zoning. Um yeah, there's a lot of uh, you know, things going on uh as far as, you know, interest rates are really low. That was interesting to hear about. Um the uh, you know, city deputy treasurer, uh have some thoughts on that. Uh and then also, I think it'd be nice to even just kind of develop like a manual, not so much like a policy, but you know, a more detailed manual just for the treasurer and his act, you know, his duties, like uh on a a monthly, quarterly basis, you know, so that, you know, whoever happens to be treasurer kind of know exactly what they need to do. Um and spell it out. And then also, uh I want to talk about yeah, just next next meeting, I'm gonna try to propose, like, one of the things I found hard is, yeah, I have the ability to pick stuff and make better investments, but I can't just take money out of certain accounts and move it to the fixed investments. So next uh agenda, or next meeting, I'm gonna put on the agenda, you know, to move some some funds over and have you guys, you know, vote on it and see if you want to go ahead with my recommendations or not. Uh and that, I'll leave it at that. Cheers.
Okay, uh Mr. City, thank you, sir. Mr. City Clerk? Oh, okay, the the city clerk is not, the elected city clerk is not here, so we'll go ahead to Councilwoman Eng- English.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh let me just make um some quick observations. Thank you to our callers with regards to concerns. Um and it all um stems with um streets and and public safety. Um rest assured that uh we have the similar concerns. Our council's working hard to address those concerns. This includes um ongoing concerns with regards to racing down our city streets with regards to uh doing donuts in the centers of our streets. So all of these are ongoing discussions and concerns that have been addressed and we're working on those, rest assured. I also want to um thank um Councilmember Montero for the President's Council Dinner. Uh great event, great participation in spite of everything that we've been going through for the last year. Uh it was good to see people out and about. Uh it was good to engage with with individuals. I got to meet with um homeowner groups and um some express um their appreciation for the parks and how they're working. We're working on the parks and uh redeveloping those parks. And so, thank you also to those that participated in the in the ribbon cutting at those parks. Um and to our staff for all that you're doing to uh make all of our parks uh safe and friendly for all of our families uh who oftentimes take their kids to the park. So thank you for that. Um I want to also uh really quickly provide a um kudos to the Boys and Girls Club of of Carson. As we all know, at our last city council meeting, we partnered with Carson and this is resolution eighty-three oh seven. Basically, um committed to quality expanded learning programs and opportunities for children and youth and community-based programs. And again, um this is, this is basically a partnership and we want to also include uh our youth, our families and children to these types of programs. And so just working collectively with our teen center, working collectively with our wrecking parks and um existing programs and services and just expand on that. And I think um Councilmember Montero could appreciate that as much as he works with a lot of students and youth. I think this is good. And Councilmember um Montero, all of us um as leaders au- ultimately voted on participating and partnering with the Boys and Girls Club. And so anyway, that we could encourage um more programming and services in Hawthorne. Um I'm all for it. And so I just want to recognize um them and and uh know that we have a resolution for you when there's an opportunity uh to do a presentation. Um I also want to um thank the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. They had a mixer that I participated in and attended. Thank you for extending uh the invitation to participate. I appreciate that. Um I also want to uh thank those. I, you know, looking at the agenda, I oftentimes um want to make sure that staff that works on our agenda and those that, you know, make up all of our agenda and everything that we're doing nightly city council meetings, it's a lot of work. And just want to extend a thank you to you for what you're doing. I look forward also uh real quick for Operation Gobble that I'm gonna be uh participating in again this year. Operation Gobble is an annual event that provides for turkeys for needy families. Look also forward to doing our um holiday events uh for the Christmas holiday. And just some things that I'm working on and I'm I am addressing a lot of other concerns, however, I'm making sure that those concerns are addressed to staff and they include building and safety issues, planning issues, they regard um, you know, being in contact with city hall, uh making sure appointments are being met and uh there's staff available to take your appointments. Uh what what you need to do to make an appointment so that you could be seen here at city hall. Most importantly, I like the fact that our customer service um training has been implemented and I look forward to seeing the participants' participation in that. But more importantly, um also want to be able to um do the training myself. And I encourage all of those that are able to do that to do that. Um other than that, congratulations, uh City Attorney Mr. Kim, and congratulations, City Manager um Mr. Norris. And um I just encourage you to continue working hard to uh make our city a um better city and more importantly um it's the, it's great synergy right now in our city. It, there's really great synergy. There's a momentum and we just need to keep on that momentum and um bring great great program, services, restaurants, whatever you want to bring. Uh ultimately, that's what we're working on and that should do it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I'm going to ask uh Councilmember Alex Montero.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, uh thank you, staff and the residents for uh listen to us. And for those who call about their concern, like Ms. English said, you know, um we are on the street twenty-four seven, so we see these problems, you know, uh car flying on our street. So that is where we're trying to deal with the issues of speeding and and speed harms and et cetera, et cetera. And I want to thank Alan Long, you know, for keeping uh doing industry improvements and 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 to address some of the issues. And maybe, I think maybe uh sometimes we will probably have a discussion about the hundred and twenty. Uh what can we do or what can we cannot do because of that, of that uh uh one twenty is a very important artery that connects uh different parts of Hawthorne and and go all the way to the one twenty and to the Venice, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe we'll have a conversation on that one. Because we, yes, we do know that people are speeding in our streets, especially when they get out of the freeway because there is a um our surface street is very close with the one oh five and the four oh five, so we definitely have to address these issues. So appreciate all the color. Uh I want to congratulate Mr. Kim. But uh you know, you've been here for more than twenty years in our city, so um it it's not the it's not new to you. So I know we, you continue to do an extraordinary job. And uh and I hope that you will help uh the HR, you know, get your recruitment that you need in your office so you can be in full staff over there also. So thank you, Mr. Vaughn Norris. Uh like again, uh you are no strangers. Uh you know, you have done outstanding at the Parks and Recs and Communication Director. And now as an our city manager, and uh we know that you will continue to do an excellent job. And also, I will ask my colleagues, you know, to give you all the love and support to help you recruit all the other staff that we needed in all the other departments. So that's the the priorities. Uh so please do not give Ms. Norris too much directives because he have to make sure he plans the sea. That his priority right now is to to help the HR uh fill the positions that we have, because we have a lot of position open in the seat of Hawthorne. So we want to attract, you know, quality people. Uh we have good benefits. Uh so we want to bring people to Hawthorne to make us the sea, one of the best city in South Bay. So thank you, Mr. Norris and Mr. Kim. So we look forward to work with you guys for many, many years to come. Um I want to say thank you to all uh the people who came for the community dinner last Thursday night. Uh we, the Hawthorne President's Council held the annual community dinner uh to raise money for the for the holiday assistance program, so we can give uh Thanksgiving uh food basket and gift card and the Christmas uh holidays also. So we appreciate. Uh it was uh last year, we didn't do it because of COVID, so this year we tried, so we we served about a hundred and fifty meals. Uh so that night, we raised uh about thirty-six hundred dollars. So I thank you for the community for show up. I appreciate very much all the sponsors, especially the people who decorated tables, all the organizations. I appreciated uh all the help that you guys give us for that community dinner. I want also congratulate uh the Parks and Recs and also Vaughn and Public Works and Engineers Works uh for the, we did a a grand open again of the Ramona Park, all the improvement project that helped there uh on Thursday morning. Uh that park is looking very, very good. Uh with new basketball surf and uh and new track, a new uh equipment, you know, gym equipment. So uh we want people in Ramona Track and all over Hawthorne to enjoy our parks because most of our parks has been in, has been uh some improvement going on. So please uh stay safe and maintain those park clean. And I was, I love to see those dog poop there, so people can have bags, so they so they can pick up their dog poop. So please keep the park safe and beautiful because parks is 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 your almost like a an asset throughout community and for your own uh housing asset. Because when parks are beautiful, your real estate goes up. So keep keep that way. So again, I want to say thank you to all of you for uh all the staff, you know, that that does the the ordinance, the preparing the agenda for us, to keep the the street cleans and et cetera, et cetera. So I want to say thank you to all the head departments that are working every day and our staff that make us look good out there when the community calls and we call them uh to do the work. So thank you for all of that. And Happy Halloween and Happy Dia de los Muertos that's coming up on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh Councilmember English?
You you already win.
I'm sorry. I said, I I think I said everything I wanted to say. Thank you, but I can't really say Happy Halloween. I'm not a Halloween person. That's how my door gets egged every year. But, you know, uh kudos to those kids that are gonna be out and about doing the trick at trunk. Just be safe, be careful. Uh stick to your parents and uh hold hands, very important. Um but yeah, that's it, Mayor.
Okay. Can, uh okay, so uh Council, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Um so first of all, I want to thank Mayor Brand for his leadership in helping cities fight back against the attempt of state legislators to eliminate local control. I'd like to issue a directive to the city attorney uh to prepare a resolution of support for this resolution uh from our city council for adoption at our next council meeting. Um I also would like to congratulate uh Councilmember Montero for the President's Council uh dinner. Um it was really a great event and it was so nice to be out and about with the with the residents and the community. Um it, I I could see that everybody was so glad to be able to to sit and talk and actually see people face to face. And um it was really an it, a really a a nice event. Unfortunately, I had another meeting. I couldn't stay for the entire thing, but I really enjoyed the part that the that I was able to attend. And the the the, of course, the 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 um the reason for the holiday assistance program is extremely important to our residents who um do not have the resources to provide their families with um with with enough, um you know, with enough resources to have a good holiday. And I think it's it's, that's really important too, that we're able to uh raise money. Resources to have a good holiday, and I think it's it's, that's really important too, that we're able to uh raise money for that. Um, I also want to thank staff, I wanna thank Von and staff for the Ramona Park improvements. Um, it was really, it was really just a pleasure to walk around the park, it looked so beautiful. Uh, with all of the um new equipment and the um the new designing of the um. Of the of the court. And the pickleball, pickleball court, which is really, which really attracted my attention, and I will be there playing. So I'm very, very excited about that, so thanks to all of the staff, to um. Engineering, to uh to Public Works, to everyone, to the Police Department, to everyone who had a part in uh, who played a part in. Making that park uh, the improvements in that park a reality, thank you to all of you. Um, just a couple of extra things, I received a letter from the county, uh the grand jury.
Mm-hmm.
Um, requesting that people volunteer for grand jury service. And just wanna read a little bit of it, uh civil grand jury service is a full-time volunteer commitment from Monday to Friday. Generally from nine A M. to four P M., working from the office at two-two-two South Hill Street, Los Angeles, California. The term of service is from July first, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. The application can be found at W W W dot L A Court dot org slash form slash jury. And the deadline to submit is November twelfth. Um, and so I'm going to ask Von, uh our city manager, if we would. He would put this letter on our website or the information from it on the website, so that. People will have the information they need in order to uh to apply if they're interested, it sounds like a. For someone who has the time, I imagine it is a great experience, and I certainly would 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 encourage anyone who's able to do that. To go ahead and do it. Um, and this is something extra also, um. Metro is is establishing a youth council. And it gives young people a chance to find out what L A County Metropolitan Transportation Authority is all about. Um, it gives you some insight into transportation planning, designing, building and operating transit. And they're trying to get youth in, youth on board now, so they're asking for youth between fourteen and seventeen. And their applications are now open through November eighteenth. So um I'm not going to read all of the qualifications, but if you're. If you're a young person from fourteen to seventeen year old, years old, and you're interested in, interested in finding out about transportation. And interested in finding out about uh how the city works, or how the, how the uh, how the state works. Um, I think this would be a great opportunity for you, plus, if you're a young person and you need credits on your uh. To graduate from high school for community service, this is a great way to get it. Uh, Metro Youth Council, um you can contact them from uh Metro Youth Council at metro dot net. And um. I will again ask uh the city managers, put this on the, put this on the website as well, a- as well, now I have a uh. I have an electronic version of this letter, so I'll forward that to you and you can put that on the website if you would. Thank you, and that's all I have, and happy Halloween, everybody. Good night.
Awesome, thank you, um and I guess it's my turn, uh thank you.
All me, do I get a chance to?
Oh, I, I thought we called on you, no, I am so sorry, Councilmember Patterson.
Not that I recall today, no.
Oh, no, Councilmember Patterson, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead, sir.
Awesome, uh I want to congratulate the city manager, city attorney for, you know, making it official, right? You guys have done a lot of hard work for the last few months, uh and earned your positions, wanna thank the community for uh calling in, tuning in, paying attention. Communicating your needs, uh thank staff for all the hard work you do, special uh one. Um, specific thing, right, that that we gotta celebrate, that staff was involved with this uh, the Ramona Park kinda upgrades. Like uh Miracle Tim says, beautiful upgrades, great basketball court, all that stuff, uh just appreciate the hard work you guys do. Uh, Community Dinner, I gotta to catch the tail end of that. Um, and uh I'm I'm excited that we're having live events in the community again. Uh, it has been quite some time, right, I've missed the community, so I'm excited, excited for those things. Number thirteen, we have a community cleanup day, just wanna remind you guys, you can get some more information. Uh, at the website, we're gonna be meeting up at A D M. at the Betty Ainsworth Center on uh Saturday, November thirteenth to help clean up the community. Um. What else, what else, what else, what else? Uh, and I truly wanna reiterate, like, I honestly believe there is nothing more important than making sure. Uh, our finances are taken care of in our city, uh this is something that I've been uh very vocal about since I was elected city treasurer. Um, I I think because of my unique background in this particular area is why this is as important as it is to me. But honestly, as a councilman, I shouldn't be the one, I shouldn't be uh pointing out uh uh mistakes in our accounting practices. Inaccuries and inaccuracies in how we uh handle our finances and pointing out the fact uh that our money's not being put to proper use. And so uh I'll always continue to fight to make sure that our finances are are uh taken care of, they're 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 being. Looked after properly, they're being accounted for properly, um and and uh they're safe, so um. With that said though, I wish everybody uh happy Halloween, I know we're getting into holidays, you know, it's a great time to spend time with your family. Hopefully, everybody is vaccinated or tested negative, if that's the, if they're not vaccinated, but test negative when they go and spend that time. Uh, with their family and able to uh uh just enjoy each other, I didn't have an opportunity to see my mom last year during uh Thanksgiving. And and definitely missed her, she's coming in town uh this weekend, actually, so I'm looking forward to seeing my mom, haven't seen her in a while. She lives in Philadelphia, so I know for a lot of us, it's a great opportunity to spend some time with family and friends and. Uh, you know, I wish you guys just some great holidays, I know we're gonna be not meeting as much, and it's gonna be a lot of different events, we're looking forward to seeing. Everybody out in the community and, yeah, just wish everybody well, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So there was a couple of things that um, a couple constituents and residents were asking questions about having to do with. The um incident that occurred in one of our businesses here in Hawthorne and wanted information, but. Um, we had to be um careful on how we we, uh you know, address those concerns and questions. Um. I wanted to give a little update on that. Um, it's my understanding that constitutional principles of a presumption of innocence and rights of. Of privacy applies to a pending criminal investigation. A criminal case is under the jurisdiction of the state, which is the people of the state of California. Versus the, and that would be, you know, who that is, and the district attorney's. Uh, agency is the char, is the charge, is the agency in charge. Um, and because of that, police, at the police and the D A's office cannot reveal the details. Of any criminal investigation, uh not only because of the above, everything that was just mentioned. But because of the jeopardizing of a potential uh investigation, so to those folks that are inquiring. Um, this in a nutshell is um the response that I got when I inquired, so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, the other thing I wanted to make mention, we had a presenter here not too long ago that spoke about um. Uh, smoke-free Hawthorne, so I just wanna give direction to see how we could bring that to the next um. Council meeting so that we could um ultimately um get that, get that passed. But that's it, those are a couple of things I forgot about, thank you.
Done, okay, thank you. Alright, so uh thank you all to to the whole team here, to staff and to the city council. I appreciate you all giving your feedback and everybody's working together to make some good stuff happen. And so uh as for me, um I want to mention that we have a new business in town, La Mitracana Ice Cream. Uh, Mexican ice cream and Paleta Store, so it was great, the grand opening was on Sunday, but. Uh, we possibly may have a um city-sponsored grand opening, so let's.
Saturday, Mister Mayor.
You already, is it?
It's Saturday.
Was it Saturday?
Yeah.
Saturday, I I thought it was Sunday.
You said Sunday, it's Saturday.
It was Saturday, okay, yeah, it was a short weekend. Um, so yeah, it was uh really good, you know, there was a lot, there was a lot of people there. Um, we even had three kids that wanted to apply for jobs, remember? So everybody's pumped up and excited and uh welcome to La Mitracana, to the city of Hawthorne, one-eighteenth and Hawthorne. And uh I guess that's pretty much it, um I do, I do wanna make sure that our on-ramps and off-ramps are clean. Um, I know we have a homeless situation all around the country, not just in L A and Hawthorne, um but all around the country. And uh the on-ramps and off-ramps have had a couple of issues here in the city of Hawthorne at least. And uh with regards to the homeless and fires that have taken place there. And so we wanna be careful with that, but we are, and we wanna work with, uh we wanna work with Caltrans to be able to solve that issue. Okay?
Mister Mayor, hold on a sec.
What happened?
I I I just wanna give a personal information, on Friday, I took my booster shot of Moderna. So my third booster shot, so.
I'm jealous, how did you do that?
Because I work with kids.
Oh, no, I know, I know that, I was just saying where, how?
Uh, Kaiser, I I I just went to uh, you visit at Kaiser, so they gave me my my booster shot of Moderna. And I did, I feel fine, I didn't feel no pain, no, no headaches, no nothing, so perfect, I didn't, no symptoms at all.
The booster shot, right?
Booster shot, my third shot, so I'm ready for the war now.
Well, I should qualify too, because I play with a lot of kids in L A.
So make sure everybody go get your 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 vaccination, uh because I, you know, like I said, I took the the two shot, nothing happened. My third shot, nothing happened to me, so I'm, I'm over here breathing and living life, la vida loca.
Alright.
Yeah, bye.
Good night, okay, thank you guys, uh and so that's it for today, uh we hope you ha- all have a good rest of your evening. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks, bye-bye.
Okay, bye, thank you.